Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 1st, 2023 budget work session. At this time, I will call on Commissioner Adams for the invocation and prayer, invocation and pledge.
Dear Father, we come today just to say and thank you first. Thank you for allowing us to assemble in this room. Father, we ask you that what we do today be done in excellence and for your people here in Cumberland County. Father, we ask you to bless everyone that's in this room, give them road mercy as they go home. Take care of their families, dear Lord, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Adams. At this time, I will turn it over to County Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Last Thursday, we presented the fiscal year recommended budget for fiscal year 2024. And tonight during this budget work session, staff would like to take any questions and answer any questions about the budget that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Adams, this.
I can interrupt her, you're right there again.
Last Thursday, when we presented, we presented the fiscal year 2024 recommended budget. And since then, we wanted to find out if at this work session, answering the questions that you may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Manager, very solid budget. There are some things that have happened in the last couple of years that have caused us some challenges, nicely employee retention and that kind of thing. So the cost of inflation, I understand, the need for increased salaries and the benefits. I have two overall global questions. One is traditionally, we have had community groups funding requests. And it's sort of been the practice, I'm not saying policy, that if they were approved the year before, that they would automatically get approved again. Well, with all the difficult things that have happened because of COVID and ARPA money and CARES money, some of these groups have been able to see an increase in funding from other sources. Some of us Commissioners sit on the ARPA committee. And I found it interesting that a lot of these nonprofits, I don't know if they just expected they were going to get this money, but none of, very few of them even applied for our ARPA money. So did they actually put in requests or was it just a carryover?
No, they actually had to put in a request back in January, February timeframe.
But I just find it odd that they didn't, they need this money, but they didn't seek to apply for our ARPA money. And was, was their ability to receive additional government funds considered when they, when they were approved for that amount?
Well, since this is really a board initiative, we didn't change anything from the previous fiscal year.
Okay.
Unless you've made a change, unless you've made a change in the past.
Right.
Last fiscal year, there were some changes in the funding, so we kept it the same because again, these are board initiatives. And being the first year, I didn't really feel comfortable.
Yeah, we're getting a little feedback, a little feedback.
I didn't feel comfortable making any recommended changes to the funding.
Okay, I just, you know, if they need the funding, they need the funding. If they don't need the funding, then, you know, it's nice, nobody ever turns down money. But if they, the other thing that I noticed on it and.
But as you go to that though, the Boys and Girls Club, didn't we fund them $50,000?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't see that.
We end up giving them more money, they got $50,000 from the ARP. That just doesn't even make sense to give them more money.
That's kind of where I was going, if we gave them to them one place, then the other. And, you know, and there's, and there's some organizations that received a real bump up this year in funding just because of the nature of what they do and how they are funded. But we continue to give them the same. Alls I would ask is that we possibly look at this. The other thing, and this is a small thing, and it's just because I am who I am. I noticed that we are spending, we will be spending a lot of capital money on elevators. And some of them are in elevators where we don't even use the third or fourth floor, or it only has two floors and we're renting it out to somebody else at a very low rate. How did those, did those make it into the capital budget only because someone said that we, it's time for us to redo them? Or are there actually problems with someone, it's probably Jermaine?
I'm gonna let Jermaine speak in detail, but since I've been here over the last three months, we've experienced several problems with elevators, so.
Okay, well, it's almost a million and a half dollars through a couple.
And, and as we, and some of it is due to inflation too. But we've had some, some issues, serious issues with elevators over the last, I know the last three months that we need to kind of correct and work on now. We always try to find a way to save money.
Right.
And so it may, this is just an estimate, but it could be lower. I don't anticipate it being higher, but Jermaine can give you the details of why we have that amount.
Okay, so good evening Commissioners. So with the first, first elevator, that's the historic courthouse, just based upon feedback from the switchgear bid consideration, which you'll see coming before you during the agenda session. The lead time on the switchgear looks like it's going to be around nine to 10 months. And so we cannot modernize the elevator until we complete the switchgear. So essentially, the historic courthouse elevator can be moved to FY25. But in the context, in the terms of the other elevators with the Bradford building, normally the elevator replacement cycle is 20 to 25 years. And so with the Bradford building, those elevators should have been replaced just based upon that timeline back in 2018. Should have been modernized. And so right now, we're seeing sometimes three to four calls per month for the Bradford elevators having issues with door function, locking out on certain floors. Sometimes the doors will open or close. And so those need to be replaced as soon as possible. With the detention center, those two elevators have not been replaced since they've been put into operation back in 2000. And so just staying in line with the replacement cycle of 20 to 25 years, recommended that you do it at 20, not to exceed 25. We're right there, I would say in the sweet spot where those two need to be replaced. And in terms of the cost, we just finished, we're finishing up rather, the elevators at DSS. We've done four caps, that was about $800,000. And those were bid prices going back from 2021. And so we adjusted a little for inflation, but as the manager said, we're looking to try to economize and save as much money over the county as possible for those elevators.
It just strikes me sometimes, we don't really see this, but all these buildings require maintenance. So when somebody comes to us and says, hey, we want to rent your building, and we want to be gracious and say, we'll do it for a dollar a year, you're actually costing the county a lot of money because they do require maintenance. And unfortunately, sometimes it's been a practice here, if a building becomes too expensive to maintain, we'll give it to somebody else. So I just want to acknowledge that these buildings do take upkeep, there are high dollars. So if they have outside agencies leasing them, we have a responsibility to be able to fund them. That's all I had in mind here.
Okay, let me get this real quick. Picking back off what Commissioner Keith said, Salvation Army, $29,000. As I read the description, it is for, to serve residents for 90 days. That sounds like white flag to me, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we already have a contract of $80,000, so I don't see funding to, the purpose is to fund people that are not doing what we do. And so. I have a concern about that, but somebody else might have a concern about it as well, but that's the issue that I have. The Vision Resource Center, there's no one else in the county that do what they do, yet they could not be funded. And they were only asking $15,000. We already have people, organizations that applied for some of the ARPA funds. And some of them have not yet been awarded, but are scheduled to be awarded coming up. So I would make a recommendation that if they are getting funds from ARPA, that they are not funded twice through our budget and then through ARPA as well. Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, that would, I guess that would take us to, from my understanding, we've already done the Boys and Girls Club. They got 50 out of, offered, didn't they?
Time.
Boys and Girls Club, we already did 50 for them, did we not?
So if you'll remember, after we conducted the RFP process.
Somebody's talking.
I'm sorry, so we conducted the nonprofit RFP process. And out of that, we actually rejected all bids and then only went forward with FTCC as a subrecipient. And so the, the process that's been working, is being worked on now to open it up to nonprofits.
No.
That's going on now.
No, that's not right, because we, we actually approved some nonprofits. We actually have, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, we approved Chris, Boys and Girls Club, some fire departments, and yes.
So what we'll do is we'll come back, we'll go through the list of who's already been funded through the nonprofit program. And then we'll, we'll make that adjust, we'll provide that through email communication of the ones that need to come off the.
And there's some that are coming up. I don't know that we ever delete anybody when they come up and met all the requirements. So I know there's a few that are on here that will be in the next cycle of, of funding.
On Monday night, correct?
Correct.
So there are nonprofits to be voted on next Monday, this coming up Monday.
So Tuesday, you have, you have opportunity to meet on Tuesday. And so recommendations from that meeting would go to the.
Following Monday. And nonprofits are on that list.
Correct.
And I would tell you, and I still have a problem with a couple of other ones. The Arts Council gets all the, all their money that comes, they get over $2 million. And I know during the pandemic, they didn't spend all that money. So I would, I would not look to fund the $35,000 from the nonprofit. I'm just gonna give you the ones I have, the Boys and Girls Club, Cape Fear Botanical Garden's gonna come, Commonwealth next coming. Salvation Army, again, that's that white flag that we just did with the $80,000. And the Airborne and Special Operations Museum, I remember that this goes back when they were going to close and the city and the county picked up to be able to do that. This goes to a foundation because the military actually runs the airborne museum. I don't know what that foundation does on that. I would not look to fund that, that $170,000 either. I don't know if anybody else has any, anyone's in.
Let me, let me go back on one, you said Cape Fear Regional Jewel, I mean Cape Fear Botanical Garden?
Yeah, they had to do to come up in this next funding with ARP. As long, as well as Cumberland Health Net, from my understanding.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I have a question in reference to an email that's been sent out to the super agents by a Ms. Harris, which is a resident in Wilmington, her concern, excuse me, she had a concern about our Commonwealth County transportation in the budget. Now, Mr. Gear, I had spoken to you, and I'd like to know what the updates are. Because when I spoke to Ms. Harper, she is coordinator for that particular program, saying hopefully I need to give support for transportation to the doctors and also all those people. And her concern is this coordinator, I don't think I've meeting with her both. But in my state, with you, her concern is that the county is only matching up to 15% to 20%. I know you said you do a fact check on that. And another issue of my ask in the email was two things, I want to know, we can possibly put more money into that program. So the elderly, now, you know, if they're commuting, it's actually important that you're obviously in your.
You sure?
Your pay and your income are a lot more, that's the number one matter. The number two ask was, India, did we make the process of the contractor a little bit slower? I mean, a little bit faster, cut it from the red tape. There's nothing different that Brian has to talk me about from attorney. I've also talked back to Ms. Harper because she touched base with me to see where that was going. I thought I hadn't yet followed up yet. So just my ask is basically, where are we funding? The dear also sent out a second agreement. Have you all just emailed already, you know, that we're looking at on email? They're still not running their area, it's still a concern. Speaking of vision resources, she doesn't have a petition. A lot of these individuals that she finds herself have been depending on this transportation. So did we ever find out what percentage we are providing with this particular program is number one? And number two, is there any way we could, we got a project, what is on the track? I know you said it was a fact, because that was one of the issues. So what is the financial balance as far as the follow-up in this area? Because I'm glad to hear you're right, a lot of nonprofits are getting money that don't even ask for it. Perhaps we can shift some of that money over to the transportation program for the elderly and HTA to help some of these people get to the doctors.
Commissioner.
That's my question, I just want to know, where do we stand on the number three for giving yours? And the update, she wants to know the update too.
Yes, Commissioner Jones, there's a agenda item for the meeting coming up on Monday that will stand the contracts with several of those contractors on generally, and I don't have the direct specifics for each program because I'm still gathering that information. But it's generally anywhere from 15% to 25% that we provide. And that's based on the requirements of the grant that we match. Now, as we go through the evaluation process and find out why some of these programs are not functioning the way they may, we will be bringing back a recommendation. But I think it'd be too preliminary based on the work that we're doing right now to make a dollar amount. But I tell you, I will say that once we get that done, probably close to the end of, before the, doing over the, probably by the end of July, we'll probably bring back to the board a recommendation for if we need some additional funding to put into the program. But right now, based on everything I've seen, we have adequate funding. We just, we had a hiccup back in the January, February, March area as far as getting the contracts awarded. And we are working to streamline that process very quickly.
Okay, I just want to also, quick reminder, so she was pretty accurate, she said 25% to 15% to 20%. Because her ask was at least 30% or above or 60%, seeing that the detail of what that particular service is for. So that is correct, we're not even giving these questions. Is that correct what she was saying to me?
Yes, but that's, that's part of the grant requirement, the grant requirement doesn't require that we give 50%. And so we.
I know it doesn't require it, but seeing that because of the need, and that's what I was discussing with you, what the, what the concern of the grievance was, and they want to help with the four years, there's a concern with me because they're not getting more money was one of the problems. Another issue for the support individuals is, like that, we stopped with me, they don't even have the connection out there like they did. So that was what I'm concerned with. Can we, or at least that was asked here, do we feel we can find some money dollars to at least get 30% or a hundred? Because what they're working with now, which is why mine is here, is why when they are having money, they can't fund the rest of the budget here. And by the way, even in Spring Lake, which parts of that, because I don't get to go to the wedding with it. And this complaint came from somebody, not a plate, just someone who's trying to make this better collapse. Ms. Harris used to be, that's the chair of the transportation board. So she was the one that put in the grievance that someone had a disability and just wants to stay on top of this. And so I did want to let you know, and it's that is the issue going around, that she's trying to get it for this. Well, that's what asked was, 15% to 20%, and my understanding from the coordinator here, that it would help them move money. But that, the hiccup issue is not just the contract, but based on the type of deal for you. If you got individuals who were willing here, the money needs to be moved. But that's, that's the issue.
Thank you.
For giving, her ask is can, if are willing, I know it wasn't hard, might as well do this turnaround for the present, this potentially, my understanding, the national law. And we feel now, maybe we'll need to do a commitment to, to give more than just the money. That's what the ask is on the community, for people that are calling in, my own, I just said my elevator, I'm getting some calls, I mean, individuals who want to get the doctor's appointment, long-term people, some of these, you know, can, can we do a little bit better job for those that are just doing it even?
Okay.
The ask is for something like this, and see, this little woman here is, can we find a way to get more support in the program? And the residents that are wanting to call in.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Adams?
I would tell, so that, and the manager may not even notice, because FAMPO met last week and this comes through FAMPO. And these are, it doesn't go to this particular person. This is a bidding process with a RFP is how these done. So even with that, we'd have to bid these, this program out. But I would tell you, Commissioner Jones, that we did have this conversation. FAMPO is looking at having a consultant to be able to review all of those transportation issues and those grants. And the committee decided, or at least moving toward it in terms of that, because I did get a couple of calls, and I do understand, if you go to Walmart and you ride on the van, you can't buy any ice cream and you can't buy any meat because you don't know when it's going to come back to pick you up and it melts. So they're doing, where is Dr. Green is, she set the standard. So they're talking about doing Ubers and giving vouchers for Ubers so people can get to their doctor's appointment on time, get back home and they're not sitting there waiting. So the process is that it's being studied and we'll come back with a recommendation through FAMPO to be able to do that. So it didn't go unanswered. And so as Chair of FAMPO, I can tell you that we're moving in that direction. And I think the Ubers is, and the lifts were, we brought that up from, because of the Health Department. Commissioner Council, y'all did a good job over there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, I got one more thing.
I need to go back.
Okay, well, okay, go back. Go ahead, Commissioner Adams.
I'm just going back because one of my Commissioners said, you know, we shouldn't just cut people off and give them zero. So as the airborne museum, if we just cut them in half this year, maybe do a half next year. It's kind of hard if you've been getting it just to go to that. So that would take it down to like 85,000. Okay, I think everybody's.
So, you're done? So my, my next concern is I want to talk about the.
Because they were going to close, remember? That when the sequestration came, they were going to close, they won't go open, but like Saturday and Sunday. And I think the city took over all of their, they do an in-kind contribution and y'all, and the county did this for me, did this to be able to kind of keep it open. No. Right.
So the next thing I want to talk about is the 4% cost of living increase. There are employees that are already at the max because they've been with the county for 20-plus years or so. And so they would not be entitled to the 4% increase, they would just receive a bonus.
No, they get the bonus, it's a cost of bonus.
Uh-uh, they will only get the bonus. And then if they are, and Commissioner, I mean, Manager Greer can explain this further, but they would only get, they will only get a bonus, they won't get the 4% because it would, it would be out of their range. And so I am asking that we consider putting them in a position where they can't get the 4% cost of living as opposed to just a bonus. Manager Greer, can you explain that?
As part of the 4% early implementation of the compensation plan, what I plan to do is actually move the ranges by 4% also. So those people eligible who are currently getting a bonus now would be able to get the bonus, get the 4% in their paycheck and add as a lump sum. Because when they get the lump sum, it's halfway, half of it is tax. So we move the ranges enough and so they can be fitted within the range, within their 4%. They can get the 4% and they will not be over the range.
Thank you.
Could I pull up one?
I, I see the wisdom in that, but that will also, we're just sort of chumming the water for the new classification system because more than likely. You're not a fisherman? But we are going to reclass, we are going through a reclassification study, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right now, just based on preliminary information that the HR has provided me, based on the 4%, to get everybody to their new minimum after the 4% would be approximately $1.3 million. And then if we move everybody who's eligible, and let's say we took everybody and moved them to the midpoint, based on that, it'll be an additional $5.6 million based on our vacancy rate. So that's the reason why I say we were close, got to work with the consultant, but just based on raw preliminary numbers, we, the additional amount or the recommendation that we'll bring in August, no later in the first meeting in September, will be approximately another $5.6 million with an implementation date of January 2024. That halves that, halves that, well, the salaries are 5.6, you add on another 30%. So it's 1.5, so it'd be six, about six, $6 million, they say, 6.5. You have that, that's about 2.3, $3 million over this fiscal year. And then the full amount of the plan or the recommendation will happen in fiscal year 25. So, and we, we will stay right in line with the budget. We generate every year in vacancy savings about between 10.5 and 12.5 million dollars in vacancy savings. So we'll have enough money to cover that. But until we get the details from the study, which we'll have by the, before July, end of July, we'll make, we'll bring back a recommendation and have that for you. That's the reason why the initial 4%, because I didn't want anybody to feel as if, you know, we made the commitment a year ago and employees in those elevators that need, we need to repair are peppering me every day about when we go get it, when we go get it. So we're going to move forward and get it done so we can bring that recommendation back to you in August, early September.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one question, and I just don't, on page 84, where it says Crown Motel Fund, is that? I don't know what that is, I just, what is that, I guess?
That's the occupancy.
Yeah. Okay, so that's their share of the occupancy tax, okay.
That's what we received from.
Okay. Okay, they get, they're the partners, I got you. I ain't go, they had a motel out there, y'all were out there, didn't let me know about it. Thank you. Thank you, madam, I'll finish.
Any other comments? Any other questions? Commissioner Faircall?
Well, the only thing I've received any heartburn about from constituents is the increase in solid waste fee from $56 to $130. And I've done just. What was I, okay. Did a little bit of analysis of it and. What was that? Okay. Did a little bit of analysis of it and, um, I, I think what it, what it amounts to is, is almost a ten percent tax increase. Think about it. If, uh, you have a hundred, a hundred thousand dollar home, your county tax without any add-ons is seven hundred ninety-nine dollars. Is that right? Is my math right on that? And, uh, so if you tack on seventy-four dollars, that's what nine point something percent. And it's, it's, it's regressive tax because if somebody has a four hundred thousand dollar home, that seven point four cents that you put on the tax rate decreases to one point eight five cents on the tax rate because of the value of the home. So some, somebody with a much more expensive home has a lot less percentage impact tax-wise. Drop it down to fifty thousand dollar home and it's a fourteen point eight cents tax increase on the hundred. I mean, on the, fourteen point eight cents on that increase. And, uh, so I, I think, I think we're just biting off too much at one time. We probably need to get to the hundred and thirty, and I don't think we need to pop everybody with a nearly a ten percent tax increase across the board. And it impacts, it impacts the lower valued homes much more proportionally than it does the higher valued homes. And for that reason, it's, it's a regressive tax. So that's, that's my two cents on it. And I think we probably ought to try to keep that in, increase instead of seventy-four, we probably ought to cut it off somewhere around ninety-five to a hundred dollars. Instead of a hundred and thirty dollars. That's just my two cents.
Madam, do you have a question?
Yes.
So when we were briefed on that, and I don't disagree with Commissioner Fairclaw, I, you know, for a lot of this landfill, if you live in the city, you're playing, you're paying for, you know, trash collection anyway. That's what most people only do. So, uh, you can't find a fifty thousand dollar house. There's not many of them left in here. The average house is like two hundred thousand dollars in Cumberland County now. Rick's got a bunch of them. They come up to us all the time. But my, my point was, what was justified to us was, hey, this is what all the other counties are doing. But what is the real need for the increase in the solid waste fund? I guess that's, that's what my question is, is what's the, is there a reason other than everybody else is doing it and we want to keep up? So how are we going to invest this money?
We have fourteen million dollars of, uh, capital needs that we cash fund every year. Our fund balance is currently sixteen million dollars. If you take that fourteen million dollars and you don't increase the rate over the next two years, was, as we construct these, we buy this equipment and try, buy the transfer station and do the bail field mining program, and we ain't trying to extend the, extend the capacity to twenty years. We end up eating up that fund balance and we'll be down to approximately one point seven to two million dollars in fund balance without a rate increase.
So right now, solid waste is being subsidized by the fund balance?
Correct.
Okay. At a rate of?
Uh, it's, it's basically every year, we, depending on what the actual, uh, expenses are. Last year, we broke even on a budgetary basis, hit a, um, small loss of three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars approximately. So again, if we cash fund these, these items and we don't increase the rate, the rate stays the same. We have fourteen million dollars that we need in order to stand the life of the landfill and build a capacity that will provide twenty years. And so we end up using up the fund balance within two years.
Commissioner Fairclaw has a number, and I'm sure there's an actuary out on what that will grow to, to, and I guess, I guess my question is, Amanda, what are you going to use that money for? But what is that number that it's going to grow to at one, what's, what's the number now, a hundred?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty. So what will that increase your capacity and what are you going to do with it?
Okay, so what we would do with that money is, first of all, we've been talking about the future of Ann Street and we've been talking about our action plan. And our course of action is to mine the bail field and to defer part of our waste to another facility. We have never paid another landfill for disposal and we're getting ready to do that. At the cost, so we're talking about diverting as much as half of our string. So you're talking about seventy thousand tons a year at forty-five dollars a ton for the first year. Then you're talking about CPI increases after that and fuel escalators. So that's one thing. The other thing is we're looking at mining the bail field. And, um, as has been mentioned, there's a big capital investment in the transfer station and there's a big capital investment in mining the bail field. There is a process to mining the bail field, which involves a lot of heavy equipment. And, um, there's going to be a cost to operating that equipment in terms of the equipment, the operators and the fuel costs every year as we run the transfer station. So we've added the transfer station for hauling and disposal, then we've added bail field mining operations. So those are two significant costs that we have not incurred to date. And there is a big intensive capital investment with those.
Commissioner Adams.
Can I ask, and you may not know this, uh, but at fifty-six dollars, how many, if you can tell, and I don't know if you know who comes through there, but it, I think the, the screen we saw last week was that's so much lower than everybody else in terms of Harnett, Sampson, everybody. Is it a possibility, and you can estimate, how many people bring their stuff over here as opposed to going to pay that one thirty down in Robinson, Harnett and Sampson, which is then because we're so cheap? I mean, even on gas at a hundred and thirty, if I got to go over to Sampson County, if I'm close by, I'm coming to Cumberland or wherever. So can you, is there an estimate of how many people might do that outside of this county that's just dropping?
Well, I think that you do have, I get calls from other counties about, I get a lot of calls from Hope County about Cumberland County residents using their facilities. But I think that the real risk in other people using our facilities comes to our commercial fees.
That's what I'm talking about, the commercial fees.
And so now our tipping fees are like thirty-six dollars, thirty-eight dollars, and our tipping fees are significantly less than other counties. So you may have a business, um, I don't want to call anybody out, but if you have like a furniture store business that had locations in Harnett, Cumberland, Johnston County, they're going to come to Cumberland County with their, with the sofas they picked up because it's cheaper to come here.
So, so then, uh, going to Commissioner Fairclaw, why would we not do the tipping fees a little bit higher and lower on the, on the solid waste fees? Because I'm going to just tell you, I, I believe that if you're talking about trash on the highways now, these folk ain't going to come pay this. They're going to start dumping this stuff on the side of the highway. I mean, when you get to be this high, that's, that's what we're going to end up having sofas and stuff up and down three oh one and everywhere else that we got to go get. So why wouldn't we do commercial a little bit higher and the solid waste a little bit less? I don't know. I'm just asking.
What, I mean, that is, that is a concept. Um, I think that you'll find that we don't charge on every ton that comes through the gate. If it is a residential load, um, now we do charge for furniture, but if it is a residential load, um, up to one pickup, four cubic yards a week, which is a pickup load of yard waste and trash, we do not charge. We do not charge folks like Southview Sanitation or folks like Cumberland Garbage who picks up residential trash. The city does not pay for trash except in cases where they're picking up furniture and yard waste with certain vehicles. So our, a, a two dollar increase on tipping fees, you're only looking at an increase of about forty thousand tons a year with, with household garbage. Whereas the household increase, we have a hundred and six, roughly a hundred and six, hundred and seven thousand households in the county. And so you're looking, if you look at the dollar on that, it's, it's about a hundred and six, hundred and seven thousand dollars per household.
And Chair, it's still a nine percent tax increase. Anyway, look at it, so nine percent tax increase because that hundred and thirty dollar fee is going to go on every tax bill that goes out. Am I wrong or am I right? Hundred and thirty dollars is where this tax, this fee is going. And it's on the tax bill.
We, we were trying to, sorry, I didn't hear the first part, but what we, what we-
This is a fee that goes on the tax bill. You have your tax at seventy-nine cents, your city tax, then you have a hundred and thirty dollars. Is that correct?
Correct.
It's going on every tax bill. And it, it's, it went from fifty-six cents, I mean, fifty-six dollars to a hundred and thirty dollars. That's a, a hundred and thirty seven percent increase. And, uh, my proposal would be to cut that in half and that will cut you off at about ninety-four, ninety-five dollars instead of a hundred and thirty dollars. And I'll tell you something else you don't know, or you probably, probably, probably don't know. I'll bet you don't know.
Okay.
The hundred and thirty dollars is not tax deductible.
Well, yeah.
But, but people, but people, uh, people don't itemize anymore as much anyway. So it's not, it doesn't have the impact it used to, but it's still not the tax deductible. As a tax, if you just increase the tax rate to nine percent, it is tax deductible for people.
So i- is your recommendation to do a half this year and with the intention of that?
Not speaking of next year, I'm, I'm just saying cut it in half this year.
Cut, cut the increase in half?
Yeah, take taxes a year. That's my, that's my, again, two cents, which I keep saying.
Commissioner, I mean, sorry, Manager Greer?
We, uh, we would get ready to propose that very thing or a step plan for the next three years. So cutting it half, that's fine.
Go to eighty-three? Ninety-three, you should buy it.
Ninety-three what?
Ninety-three dollars instead of the one third.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I, I just-
Is that halfway?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't try to-
That's reasonable. Reasonable, yeah.
So we'll, we'll, we'll just make it ninety-three.
Commissioner Booths?
I just have two and I'm, I'm trying to piece it here on page eighty-three, number two seventy-seven, what Commissioner Jones was talking about. Is that fund not in any way assist the people that she was talking about earlier, the North Carolina Elderly Handicap Transport Fund?
That is the elderly transport fund.
That is it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, then, it, yeah, that's, and we're, we're up over a million dollars and, uh, it's one point one and it's going to go up to one point three. What, are there more, are the people moving here? More people getting labeled as handicap? More people, I mean, what, what, what's doubled since? Yeah, what's doubled since twenty twenty-one actual?
It's just the grant award.
It's a grant.
Yeah.
And we make, we do some of the grant.
So we get it. Okay. All right, then, uh, next question. Two fifteen, the Injured Animal Fund. It looks like you just put a zero on it. Uh, they, they, it was actual twenty twenty-two, five nine one, projected twenty twenty-three, five nine one zero, and so recommended two times what this year's going to be, down to ten thousand.
Yeah, those are actually contributions that are made by the public to, for animal welfare.
People get it, man.
People give us, they kind of contribute.
It has to come through us?
Yes, because it's a special fund for animal services.
Because, I mean, Marshall may get the trash calls, but I get the cat calls.
Motion to a jury.
No, I know, I know, I know the letters where they'll call about a dog that was hit and they'll go, yeah, where's the fourth person you called? Does that mean because they didn't get this extra money, they're not going to go get it? I mean-
No, no.
But we get, I get letters, calls.
On top of what we do.
I mean, I haven't got, I got a call about cats bothering people, come getting on their cars and stuff. Yeah, they, the people that are bothered by cats don't feel any better that they're neutered. They still take them back and let them out. So if you have ten cats there and five of them are females, they'll come catch the five females, take them, neuter them and then reunite and break them back.
Bring them back. Bring them back. You neuter them and bring them back.
Okay, anything else, anything else concerning the budgets, anything outside of cat calls?
Motion to a jury.
Is there, it's been motion, um, it's been properly motioned, second, all those in favor? Unanimous, meaning a jury.
Thank you.